I'm calling to order the May 12th, 2025, meeting of the Auburn Select Board. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the post agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have Chief Coleman has signed up for public comment, so I'm gonna...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Board. I just wanted to take an opportunity to publicly thank the Fire Station Building Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, our town meeting. As you are aware, and just to remind the public, a week from tomorrow, on Tuesday, May 20th, is the annual Town Election, and the question on whether or not to support the construction of a new fire station will be on that ballot. The Fire Station Building Committee has been absolutely amazing to work with since essentially end of last summer, it was just about August that the Board, that the Town Manager appointed that committee and they began work. And along with our architect and owner's project manager, they have put together an extremely responsible project that they are putting forward to the voters. And again, through support of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, our Town Meeting, who overwhelmingly supported the financial plan to fund this project, the project that will be put before the voters on Tuesday, when you look at all of the area communities around us who have recent fire station projects that have been voted since the first of the year, since January. The financial plan and the project that's being put forward to the Auburn voters is a project that is the least tax burden on an annual basis on the median household than any other community that has put a project forward since January. And that's all due to the work of the people that I just mentioned. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you all publicly. Hopefully, although we're nearing the end of this chapter, hopefully after Tuesday, there's another chapter to open, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all and to remind the voters to come out on May 20th for the annual Town Election. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion that we move Item 9A forward to now?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Repulsed? The Chair is a yes as well. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Through the Chair, I just wanted to update the Board that we have a retirement this June 20th. Mary Ann Murphy, who is here tonight, our treasure collector, will be retiring after being with us for 11 years. Prior to her time in Auburn, I had the privilege of working with her in the city of Worcester for several years, I don't even know how many, but I just wanted to update the Board and let you know that she'll be retiring in about a month's time.
Do Board members have any questions? Comments? I would like to thank you, Mary Ann, for your service to the Town of Auburn, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Okay, so we are moving back to four. We have no community organizations. We do have a presentation from the Auburn Public Library. The Director, Michael Zeller, is here. Hi!
First off, I'd just like to thank the Select Board for inviting me tonight and giving me this opportunity to discuss some of the very exciting things that we've been working on over at the library. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Michael Zeller. I'm the new Auburn Public Library Director. I've been there, well, I will be there for four months as of tomorrow, so I'm very, very new. It's been a wonderfully supportive community. Before coming to Auburn, I was the Assistant Director at the Shrewsbury Public Library. So to get started, I just want to present a few statistics of what's been going on at the library. So for over the past six months, we've welcomed over 21,000 visitors, we've loaned over 32,000 physical items, and over 13,000 ebooks. We've also hosted 124 programs with 1,375 attendees. So as you can see, the Auburn Public Library is bustling. We're an extremely busy community hub, and with many of the new services that we're planning on rolling out, I would anticipate that those statistics will only increase. So first off, one of my first goals after coming to Auburn is to really focus on making the library an even more welcoming location. If the library is to truly live up to its role as a community hub, we want it to feel warm, comfortable, you know, we want all people from all walks of life to be able to come to the library and use it and feel like it's a home for them, like they're welcome The first part of that has involved hiring some additional staff. So last month, we hired a youth services librarian. This is a role that will primarily focus on developing programs and building out the library's collection of materials targeted at patrons from, you know, early infancy or your babies up through young adulthood, so, you know, sending people off to college. She's only been here for about four weeks, but in those weeks, she's already begun adjusting the collections to make them more accessible. She's created a number of new weekly programs for kids and teens that emphasize increasing literacy and promoting creativity, and she's developed a robust all ages summer reading program. And just for comparison's sake, summer reading planning usually takes four to six months. She did it in two weeks, so that's kind of miraculous. One of the things that she's going to focus on going forward is engaging with Auburn's teen community with the high school just right across the street from the library. It seems like the library should really be a safe, welcoming, comfortable place for teens to come after school to either continue pursuing their studies or even just to comfortably socialize with, you know, with their friends. In fiscal year '26, the library has budgeted to hire a reference librarian, so this will be an individual with advanced training capable of assisting library patrons with more complex inquiries and devoting larger amounts of time to assisting with those inquiries. We're looking for an individual with significant experience, particularly using library databases and assisting with individual research endeavors. One of the other things that we've done since I've come on board is we've made the Auburn Public Library fine free, so we do not charge overdue fines now for our materials. This brings us more in line with other libraries within the CW-Mars system. A few years ago, the CW-Mars system as a whole went fine free. There are still a tiny handful of libraries that charge fines, but we were kind of one of the holdouts, and it felt like this was an important thing to embrace, to just be a little less punitive about things. The greater Massachusetts library community in general has determined that fines really don't provide any benefit to the library. Your staff end up, it ends up eating up more staff time, you know, hunting them down, you know, collecting them, counting them, it's really just not worth it. And it just helps to make the library feel like a less punishing kind of place. We've also rolled out a patron satisfaction survey. This is to get some feedback about our programs, our collections, our hours, our staffing, in an effort to determine, you know, in what ways we're meeting the community's needs and in what ways we need to improve our services. As a new manager, this seemed like kind of a no-brainer to me because I don't have any context for this stuff, so I really want to hear directly back from the community. We've got flyers placed around the library. We have, they kind of look like that, you can scan the QR code to get right into the survey, but we've also been printing that QR code at the bottom of all of our checkout receipts, so everybody borrowing items from the library will have an opportunity to complete that survey. This will help determine our focus going forward, particularly as it relates to our strategic plan, which is my next slide. One of our other major projects that we're working on now is updating our library's strategic plan for the 2026-2030 period. The library's current strategic plan ends at the end of this year, and for anybody who doesn't know, libraries need to have a strategic plan on file with the state in order to qualify for certain grants, so we really want to make sure that we have something ready to go as soon as this current one ends. So myself, the library's Board of Trustees, and a consultant that we've hired to assist with the project, will be soliciting feedback throughout the town via some additional surveys, some focus groups, some individual interviews, and then this feedback will all be compiled into a report that we'll utilize to determine the library's goals going forward for the next five years, with a bit of an emphasis also placed on incorporating current library best practices. And that's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions about any of the things that I've discussed or anything that I haven't discussed?
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Sure.
Just on the new positions, I know we were down positions. Are these additional positions or are these repurposed positions?
A little bit of both. We've taken some of the funding from what was going to be the Assistant Director position to make the youth services position. The reference librarian position will be a new position, though.
What does a full library staff look like? How many positions are we talking about?
I would say ideally, we'd like around 15 to 16 people, I think would be where we should really be at. That's, as I understand it, that's what we were at about 10 years ago, and that, just from my experience, feels like for a library of this size, mixture of full and part-time people.
What role will volunteers play in the library, if anything?
So my understanding, I love having volunteers, most of the libraries that I've worked at have had volunteers. My understanding is that there are some challenges to incorporating volunteers because of the union issue. We have to just make sure that volunteers are tasked with very specific duties that don't really overlap with, or that are slightly lower impact kinds of duties than what our paid union staff do. So I'm still kind of working out how that's going to fit in.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
Yeah, just a question. When do you, I was going to ask about the sunroom. When is that project going to be, well, hopefully, completed?
So we are, I brought in some individuals from the state to kind of examine that project because, I'll be honest, when I came on board, I had some concerns about it. Those concerns were echoed by individuals from the state, so at present, we're kind of revisiting what that's going to actually look like.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for the presentation, and couple of, full disclosure for everybody, my wife is a member of the Library Board of Trustees, though these questions aren't suggestions or mine. So I don't often point to the Town of Oxford as somebody who we should follow. However, in this case, when they get something right, they do. They do a program called the Resident Artist Monthly, so local artists can display their artwork monthly at the library, no, you know, no charge. So as you're looking at new programs and with the theme that this should be, you know, a community hub, which I agree with, that might be another sort of way to welcome in the community.
Yeah, we did something similar in Shrewsbury, and it was very popular, so that's a great idea.
And I just want to, you know, say that, you know, I get dragged to the library almost every weekend.
You shouldn't have to get dragged.
Although, you know, I get dragged, but I go willingly. And, you know, I just want to, you know, commend you and your staff on what you've done with the library. You've managed to build off successfully and continue the programs that were previously there, but I see a lot of, like, new collections and new artwork and, you know, sort of new initiatives coming in, and it really is a noticeable change of environment that, you know, that I appreciate, especially the return of the periodicals.
Oh, yeah.
So that is probably my favorite, to go in there sometimes, you know, you don't have enough newspapers and some people, there's always somebody with a newspaper, but the periodicals are there, and grab a magazine, sit down for a half hour and read, you know, read a magazine, is a great thing. So I just want to commend you on the great work that you're doing and tell you to keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Looking forward to seeing how those numbers increase in your time as you roll these things out. It is a community effort as well, so love to hear more about what you can do for volunteers, and as more and more people come through the doors, I'm sure you're going to get more and more requests of those people to want to make it better and volunteer. So looking forward to seeing what kind of guidelines you have around that and getting the community more engaged, so thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We are moving along to number six, departmental items from DPW.
I just wanted to come in and announce the next round of roads that are going to be hopefully completed by the end of the fiscal year. So we have, it's mostly one neighborhood with some other shorter sections, but the neighborhood of Ridgewood Drive, Saratoga Road, Washburn Road, Arrowhead Ave., and then the entirety of Main Street and a short section near the Millbury Town Line of Old Common Road.
Board members have any questions?
I do know, go ahead. I have a lot of them, so you can.
Chocker. Do any of these roads, it's been a while since I've walked any of them, but are we putting any sidewalks, rebuilding any sidewalks on any of these roads? I'm struggling to think back, I don't think any of them, or a few of them, might have sidewalks or partial sidewalks, but are we doing anything with sidewalks on these roads?
Sure. So none of the roads on the list had any sidewalks on our prioritization plan to construct, to add new ones, but actually, Arrowhead Ave. was listed as one of the roads that have a sidewalk that's in poor condition, so that was actually one of the factors that we considered when choosing the roads, so we can take care of the road and rebuild the sidewalk at the same time.
What is the general idea of when you have, I mean, these are obviously older streets built, you know, many, many years ago when sidewalks might not have even been part of the, you know, subdivision requirements. What is the process to add sidewalks in these type of existing neighborhoods? Obviously, I understand there might be some, you know, issues with right-of-way, and people might get upset because they've been maintaining, you know, space as part of their front yard, but, I mean, as we're trying to get people out and about and, you know, safely moving to share the street, as it were, what would be our process?
So we have, and I'm not exactly sure of the number of roads, probably about 20 identified areas in our sidewalk prioritization plan that we're looking to move forward with. Currently, we have, we're looking, we're trying to get a design going for two of those roads, but I'm hoping to, once we get through the prioritization plan, then obviously, there'll be other roads that we'd be looking at. But those were the top priority, and they were more focused on connectivity, schools, more vulnerable populations.
You know, I just worry as we do these redevelopments or we do these repavings that we're not, I mean, it's great that we're prioritizing around schools and things of that nature, and obviously, we want children to be safe, but we also want our neighbors to be safe and encouraged to walk in their neighborhood and get to know their neighbors, so hopefully, we might have some money in the fall that we can perhaps direct towards being a little more aggressive and not just focus on priority plan and try and, you know, as we're doing these streets, trying to upgrade them, but thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may? So I'm going to sort of pick up where Mr. Carpenter left off because that's exactly where sort of my thinking was. My memory of the prioritization plan was that it was to guide the new funding that we had introduced two years ago for sidewalk-specific projects. These were to be new sidewalk constructions unrelated to the roadwork. However, I believe at that time, several of us, if not the Board as a whole, had stated that we wanted to, as you were putting down new roads, as you were picking them up, we did not want you to just simply pick them up and put them down, that if we could build sidewalks, take advantage of the contract of being there, take advantage of the money, and to actually construct sidewalks as part of these roadway projects separate from that sidewalk money and separate from that sidewalk prioritization plan. So I'm kind of disappointed to hear that of these streets, I mean, some of them, you know, I understand Main Street is not a street necessarily, it's a dead-end road that you would put a sidewalk, but some of these streets do see fairly, you know, a large number of residents, a large number of residents walking in the street right now with their dogs, et cetera, and there's probably the opportunity to put sidewalk in, and I would have hoped that we were a little bit more proactive as part of the street reconstruction plan, including the sidewalks. One of my questions is already answered, it was which one of these, you know, do all these include sidewalks, which ones don't? Appears only Arrowhead Ave. is going to get sidewalks.
Correct. So I just wanted to also mention that anytime that we reconstruct a road, it's, we, when we, when we look at reconstructing a road, we want to, we want to be coming in and making sure that the road is safe. A new sidewalk construction does require a design, we would need a surveyor, so it's a longer period of time, so it would require a lot more planning, so it might delay some of those projects.
Right, and I understand that, but if we're worried about safety, pedestrians walking in the roadway is not always safe. So if we're worried about safety of users, we have to consider safety of all users. Second, since our current pavement management program is to essentially let the road fall off and then rebuild when it's gotten to a certain degradation level, we don't do pavement preservation, we do pavement management. So as roads go into the Mill and Overlay bucket or later, that's when we act on it, and we're thinking that, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, previously, Director Coyle had a 20-year plan where our plan was to hit, it was to repaint every road 20 years because a lifetime of a road is approximately 20 years. Giving our current funding source in the Finance Committee, I believe during that conversation, it was more of a, due to the escalation of labor and materials, we're at a 40-year plan, knowing that roads only last 20 years. So if we are punting on constructing sidewalks right now, because it takes a little bit more time to survey, we're not planning on coming back under the current plan to Arrowhead Ave., well, they're getting sidewalks, to Ridgewood Drive for 20 years. So that means unless we fulfill all of our sidewalk priority list, which we're only doing two next year, you know, and then we start adding streets, we're not coming back to these streets for 20 years, so these streets are not getting sidewalks for 20 years. That's not, that's not good planning in my mind, you know, and that's why, you know, we had a focus on, again, if you were doing roadwork at the time, take advantage of the contract, to take advantage of the materials, take advantage of the funding source, and put sidewalks in. And it sounds like we're slipping even further back. Before we had this prioritization plan, there was another sidewalk prioritization plan that was done under a previous director, not under you, I'm not holding you accountable for that, that never got fulfilled either. So we're just slipping further and further back with sidewalks, and, you know, we've had a funding source for the past two years that this Board strongly advocated for ARPA money as well as then a permanent CIP, and there's not been one sidewalk constructed as part of that program.
And we have, we've had, made some repairs for, on sidewalks using that money, and it was my understanding that it was not only just to construct the sidewalks, and that might have been my, I might have misunderstood, I think that there were some meetings that, you know, we had those discussions, but we have made some repairs on sidewalks, but unfortunately, you know, with the availability of surveyors and engineers, that does take time to design those sidewalks.
So I guess I'll, you know, I'll move on from sidewalks. Hopefully, we will see sidewalks be constructed going forward as part of the regular pavement management program as well as new projects. The other question I have is Main Street. Right now, there is no drainage in Main Street. If you go down there, obviously, the road's in bad condition, that's one of the reasons why, but also, all of the water is shedding off to the end because it's downhill into wetlands because there's no drainage. Are we taking advantage of this project to put in drainage into Main Street?
We always look at drainage whenever we reconstruct a road. That's one of the things that we try to make sure that we correct. That's our only opportunity.
So we are putting in storm drainage into Main Street?
So I believe that we're reconstructing, I can look into exactly what the plan is. One of, one of my engineers has been on site, and he is much more familiar with exactly what we're replacing and what we're putting in, but I know that we've had several discussions on the end of Main Street and how to address that.
So I just want to make sure that we're no longer doing sort of the country drainage, where we're letting everything flow down the street onto private property, and in this case, it's going right into wetlands, and we've had residents come to this meeting, you know, to this Board voicing concerns about the contamination of the wetlands already due to past property, and I want to make sure that we're not contributing towards it.
No, I, I mean, I'm not against country drainage where it fits, but in a, in an area where it's a sensitive area and steep slopes, it's not a good combination.
The last thing, I know last year I asked you about pavement preservation, about techniques to restore the rideability and the safety of the roadway and to extend the life of the roadway, and you said at that point you were looking at some examples of it.
And I continue to look at, I'm continuing, you know, I'm, I sign up for training, I continue to look at, I know that in the past, we've looked at pricing, and it was pretty much the same as Mill and Overlay. Technology's changing all the time, so I continue to look at it. I know that our best bet right now is crack sailing, that's, you know, that's the first line of defense after we pave a road, but, you know, we, I'm going to continue to evaluate it, or I'm also going to include in the next round of, in the next contract, you know, more Mill and Overlay to try to address some of our major roads.
Okay. I guess I would ask that at some point, we stop looking at it and we start implementing it, only because, you know, other communities in Massachusetts and nationally, and I know we were just at the same conference, and they had several speakers on pavement preservation to the point where now Mass DOT is doing it on their route highways, and the reason why is because it is more cost-effective to treat the roads with And the reason why is because it is more cost-effective to treat the roads with crack sails, fog sails, bonded wearing courses, all these, and they are cheaper at that level than a mill and overlay.
And, and I totally agree that, you know, those preservation techniques, they can be cheaper, but we also want to make sure that, that we're, you know, we're looking at where it fits because some of those techniques have a thickness to it. So the concern would be when we have sewer manholes and, you know, any sort of structures that you're not creating, in essence, a pothole for everybody to hit anytime that they're driving. So definitely would like, you know, I'm still looking at it, I'm still, you know, I still would like to do it, I just want to make sure that it's the right fit.
Because I, I'm concerned that our 20 years is now a 40-year, and then what you're going to work it backwards is to start doing some of these techniques. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
More concerns, again, I think Mr. Crane just mentioned most of them. How, is there a certain amount of hours that it would take to design a sidewalk? And are we just understaffed where we can't do that? Or is it a priority item? And why, we've had over a year, why didn't we have engineers look at sidewalks in the past 14, 15 months?
So it just depends on, one, finding the consultants to do that, depending on whether there's wetlands, a wetland scientist has to be employed to flag the wetlands, a surveyor. So it's, it is a process. And at this point, I know that, you know, I'm, I'm having trouble getting engineers to call me back. So, you know, we're, we have certain parts of the information, but it's, it's, I think, because, I'm assuming partly because of ARPA, but I don't know if it's a spillover, but engineering companies are absolutely slammed and trying to get a small project like a sidewalk design to be a priority. I think, you know, that's, that's a hard sell.
It shouldn't be.
No.
It shouldn't be a hard sell. Again, we've allocated additional funds, and if that's not enough, then we need to know what that covers. So whether we can allocate the right amount of funds. The other thing you mentioned is the drainage. I mean, we should always be designing these the way we would hold anyone accountable, and we shouldn't be doing country drainage just because it's convenient. We should be looking at design of these whole things, every street, and if it, if we're not ready for it, we need to either delay or have that conversation to say, you know what, this isn't the year because we're not fully designed for it. But I think it all comes back down to how are we best spending the money that we get, whether it be Chapter 90 or additional funds from the taxpayers here in town, is what are we doing long-term? And obviously, we're not funding enough to rebuild the roads on the 20-year plan, but we need to do some preservation, some other techniques. The road shouldn't be in the conditions they're in. And again, if we've underfunded for 20 years, well, we need to get back on that and understanding the costs continue to rise. Any further delay, and if we're doing a 40-year plan, it's only going to cost us that much more. So I think the board and the town relies on you to come in and say, this is what it would take to fulfill all these needs. These are the plans, this is how we're going to act on it with your support or, you know, with these funds, whatever that may be. I think that's how we're going to address a lot of these situations. Again, I don't drive every road every day, but I know the roads that I do drive are getting a lot worse, and I don't see them getting better until there's a full plan in place. And we can't wait until it's undrivable to repair it, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Through the chair, I just, I have one comment, not to harp on it. So when I say country drainage, I just wanted to say that we're looking at green infrastructure, so just being a little bit more conscious of, you know, the environmental effects because we have our stormwater permit, our pollutant discharge permit, we will need to do a little bit more, a lot more infiltration. So, you know, so that's something that we're also looking at.
Question, thank you. It seems like each year, unfortunately, we're repairing fewer, a shorter length of road each year. Would it be possible for you to provide, to say, looking back eight years, what, what number of, what length of road, the roads that were repaired, please?
Sure, absolutely.
And reconstructed and resurfaced?
Absolutely. And I just wanted to mention that this length, the length here, it's a lot shorter just because we're doing a lot of drainage. The, the neighborhood, the Arrowhead neighborhood, there was a lot of drainage replacement, as well as we had another, another road that, that needed drainage repairs. So, so it's not just reconstruction, but it's very heavy on the drainage.
The other question I had is, I understand that the state takes care of Route 12 and Route 20. Do they take care of any other roads in town?
So there's, I mean, as far as town roads, any numbered road, they would be taken care of. And, so, you know, 395, 290, the Pike, any, any of those numbered roads.
All right. So how many roads do we have in town that we're responsible for maintaining?
About 90 miles. 90.
Thank you.
Let us have a question really to the manager and perhaps to the DPW Director. In that we're having difficulty, or the Director is saying we're having difficulty finding surveyors, is it customary to have a contract, just a standing contract with a firm for these? Because I'm assuming on a, on a yearly basis, we have survey work to be done. Would it make more sense to contract with a firm so that when we need somebody, we would not have to go through the cumbersome process of potentially having to bid? I mean, it just seems to me that would be a logical thing for us to pursue as an-
Through the chair, I agree. I think we should look into a better way to tackle this problem and having people that we contract with, that we can go to without having to go out to bid for each single project or trying to get a surveyor for each single project is going to take way too much time. So I'll definitely look into that.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Are there any additional questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
We have no communications items. We are on select board general items. We do have a recognition. So this is the first year that the annual town report had a, there was a cover contest and residents were able to submit photographs that they have taken from the town. And I just want to recognize Jill Egan. She was selected for the cover of the town report. Did you want to come up?
Yes.
We have the town report for you and a certificate.
Congratulations. Beautiful picture on the cover. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I also just want to note that all of the submissions that we receive from residents appear in the report. On the back cover, there are many of them, and throughout the report. Board members have any questions?
I would just say, I mean, the submissions were phenomenal, so you really were a standout. You know, so many of the submissions were, I mean, we'd be lucky to have 10 of them and we have so many more. So thank you for doing it, and I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? All right, so we are moving on to 8B. We have a gift acceptance.
Motion to accept a gift in the amount of $5 to DDIS from Bobo, actually Augustus Bobo Karma. Accept that with gratitude, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We do have a board vote on the open air license for the GFWC Auburn Junior Women's Club for the annual duck race. Are there people here? No, because it's just an air, it's a license.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair and select board. We have new members because we're trying to show them the ropes, so.
Wonderful.
Yes, I am a past president for the state for the GFWC and a past president of the Auburn Junior Women's Club. Some time ago, like 20 or so years ago, our group got together and decided they wanted to do something, they wanted to give back to this community, i.e. in the way of families. And we borrowed an idea from a group out in Marlboro, and it was called a duck race. And we did all, figured out all the logistics, and here we are 20-something years later, still doing, still having this event. And we're grateful that we're allowed to do this. So this is Lynn, this is Lynn, excuse me Lynn, I'm sorry, Lynn and Nancy Barston, they're members of our organization of the Auburn Juniors here in town, Social Civic Club. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for us. I went to the DCG meeting the other day and did state that I just would like you to know that I have been in touch with the assistant town engineer for the construction that's going on over at the library. Before we take money from the public, it's really important for us that we can ensure that we will actually have the event. So looking at those grounds, we were a little concerned. But after having talked with him, we walked around the area and we discussed how we set up and the ongoing construction for the bridge and felt that we could, we could definitely do it. We may abbreviate some things, obviously for the safety of our event goers. But we're going to meet one week, probably this week actually, before the event and go over it again to make sure that our fencing is up and all the things are in place. Lastly, I'd like to just say that our event is always held after the events at the cemetery. I know some folks, you know, complain that we're having this event and we, our race does not go off until the events at the cemetery and all the memorials are completed and then, and only then does our duck race go off, so.
Do board members have questions?
Please.
Madam Chair, first, thank you for everything you do. It's a great event. Just for the people watching at home, where are you selling the ducks and?
Where do we sell the ducks?
And will you have the quack pack?
Well, we, the six quack, yes, we have a six quack and a flock. We sell, we start selling ducks, obviously, within our group, within our members, and then we use the community. We go, we'll be at the town election next Tuesday, we'll be out there under the tents. And then basically, it's word of mouth. Yeah, people are-
And the day of.
And the day of. Oh, yeah, we sell a lot the day of, thank you Nancy. A lot the day of. People are very generous, businesses have been very generous like the last few years. So we're very grateful. We do a $500 prize for the lucky duck, and then we have a lame duck for the last duck. The other thing I might mention is that, you know, we go into that water before our event to ensure that the waterway is free of debris so that our ducks can, you know, race. And so we typically leave it cleaner than we find it. Because we go into that water and we're very conscious of our environment and it's very important to our group. So we go in and we take the trash out or move limbs, you know, just to make sure that everything is set there. So I'd like to share that. Did I miss anything?
No, other than we should also thank the fire department-
Oh, yes.
-and the police department and the town-
And the town.
-for, you know, allowing us to run this event. Because without them and without the community support, we wouldn't be able to do it.
It's wonderful to go around town, I'll be at the election, and somebody will come up and, you know, in their 20s and they're like, I remember the duck race from 15 years ago, or I won the art contest, or I won, you know, the duck race. So it's, it's wonderful that we're able to make these memories for the community here in Auburn. So thank you very much.
Board members?
Is there an online component? Can you purchase online?
You sure can.
Is there a website?
Yeah, a website. I think, I'm pretty sure Mary McGirl has it set up, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, auburnjuniors.org. W W W dot auburnjuniors.org. Thank you for that question. There is a link.
Questions, sorry?
Madam Chair, make-
Oh, can I, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you please make sure that you wait until the ceremony is done? I know last year, I was at the ceremony, and by the time I got to the library, everything was packed up.
Yes.
So I was a little like, oh, I know they say they wait, but it was, it was not very long after. So please, please wait.
Wait for the fire department.
We wait for the fire department. We, in other words, when the events, when the events at the cemetery have completed, that truck will come down and around by the mall and come down along the side of the library. That's when our event starts.
Yeah.
So it's after that. So do you mind if I ask, what is it, what did, what is it that you missed?
The whole thing last year.
So it might be, I don't know, and the chief can probably speak to this, it might be that while the speeches and everything were going on still, the fire truck had already departed and that-
That's a good point.
And that made you think that it was done, but actually, so the speeches and everything were still going on, so the event was still taking place.
Thank you. I appreciate that input. Thank you.
That's good to know.
No, we appreciate that.
What time do the speeches normally end?
Correct. Correct.
I think it's probably, by the time they get in, like after the parade, by the time they get in place and they start the speeches, probably a good half hour, 45 minutes later.
Is it really? Wow.
Yeah.
That's good for us to know because you can imagine, we have families there with little people, and all of the events there are free. So we have the free kids games, which are run by volunteers. Last year, they were the honor students and some of our scholarship recipients that were there that volunteered to do those kids games. So I think by the time the truck comes, they're so excited, everybody's, you know, over there. Yeah, that's good to know.
Chief, just tell them to take the long way to Oxford to get back.
No, no, we'll make note of it.
That, that is a good point because what happens is when, when everybody goes into the cemetery, we leave so police and fire are not clogging up Central Street, so-
Right, great.
So by the time we get back, they're still, as Mr. Crane said, they're still there a good half hour, 45 minutes. So I'm just trying to think about like when that would be, if it's closer to noon time or, it's a good hour after we get back.
Oh, is it really?
Because we are to, you know, trying to be as quick as we can so that the ladder truck isn't out of service.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, that's something we'll talk, we'll have to, we'll have to think about that, you know, from a logistics expert, when we, you know, we can delay a few minutes, but thank you, I appreciate that input.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Yeah, it is good to know.
Madam Chair, I think a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
Auburn Juniors, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Madam Chair, I think we have another-
Yeah, we should make a motion to waive the fee because they are a nonprofit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our second, we have a board vote for Bulle's Transportation. Can you just give us your name and a little bit of what you're planning?
Yes, my name is Eli Ascanian, and I do Uber and Lyft. But this year, I wanted to get a higher Uber and higher Lyft, which is Uber Black and Lyft Black. And in order for me to do that, I have to have livery place and livery company and that's why I need it. And I need that paper so I can park my car in the airport for waiting for people because, and picking up people. Because at nighttime, it gets so hectic, which is 4,000, not 4, 14,000 people come. In a period of two hours, the drivers are like ants, you can't even park there. And that Massport pass allows me to pick up people if they're not on Uber or Lyft platform. So Bulle's Transportation, basically.
Okay.
That's probably what I need it for.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Do board members have questions?
I have one. Because this is a home occupation, it's just you, correct? You're not looking to-
No.
-have additional drivers or additional vehicles stored at your property? Okay, thank you.
If you can just confirm, so one vehicle?
Yes, sir.
It's a specialty or a different?
It's a Lexus TX 2025.
Okay.
And it's luxury, so.
I was just confirming because I'm assuming there's requirements to get that level as well on-
Yes, yes. Level Black is like, you have to have like a really nice car so you could do those kind of rides.
And it's not an extended limousine type thing, so.
It's a-
It's a normal car that you would normally park at your house.
Hundred percent. Thank you. Thank you.
And my understanding is, is that you will also go through the ZBA, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do board members have any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we provide Mr. Ascanian with a letter addressed to the authority stating that the town of Auburn does not have private limousine livery required, no objections to him operating literally.
I would just ask that you include that it's a single vehicle on the property.
Also, with the understanding that this will be a single vehicle on the resident owner's property.
There is a motion, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on 8E, we have a drain layers license. Is there a motion?
Motion that we approve it, subject to our usual verbiage.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. 8F. We, there is a, the library, board of trustees is looking for a board member to join their strategic planning advisory committee. Is there a board member who is interested in joining?
I will volunteer.
Wonderful, so is there a motion?
I will make a motion that Mr. Carpenter represents the select board on the strategic library planning committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We are on 8G, and I am going to hand this over to Chief Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to update the board on the town manager finalist schedule, the candidates will be meeting with the management team from four to seven tomorrow, they've been scheduled in one hour time block, so starting at 4:00 PM, 5:00 PM, and 6:00 PM, those meetings will take place here in Town Hall. And then the interviews were moved from Tuesday to Wednesday. The public meet and greet is going off as scheduled at the Auburn High School on the second floor from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. Each candidate will have their own classroom, and we will have signs on the door so people, there'll be plenty of signage to get there if they park in the back of the school and come through the gymnasium. As soon as they walk down that hallway, we have the classrooms that are sort of right in front, so it's very visible, but we'll have name placards on the door so we know who the candidates are when the public comes in. So the public will have the opportunity to meet the candidates again on Wednesday, May 14th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. And then that'll leave a half an hour travel time between 6:00 and 6:30 in case any board members come and to get the candidates here. And then the public interviews will start at 6:30 PM in one hour block, so it'll be 6:30, 7:30, and 8:30. And then after the interviews, the agenda states that the select board will have an opportunity for discussion, there will be a public comment, and then the agenda does state that there could be a potential vote off of the board to discuss next steps. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
I, I just want to confirm, so on this, it says department head meet and greet, I know we said department managers.
That's correct, it's the manager, so it's the department heads, their deputies, and what we consider to be the division heads.
And was an email circulated, or how, how are they aware, are they all aware of it?
Yes, they were all, they were all emailed, and the update email went out to all of them today.
And another question, is it scheduled as a meeting or is it optional if they so choose?
It is not mandatory for the division heads, so it's not a mandatory meeting.
Thank you.
I just have one question, and I know we didn't really discuss this, but I've been watching a lot of interviews of candidates, fascinating watching, and I've actually not fallen asleep, so I do think the board should come up with a way in case department heads, division heads want to communicate with us, that they can provide that through an email perhaps to Paradigm or to Mr. Kazanovich, and that could be forwarded to us through that, just because people may not be comfortable doing things in a public setting. I mean, obviously, the department heads come before us with some regularity, their deputies, some of them do, but not all of them do. And then if you're a foreman or supervisor, otherwise, you may be uncomfortable coming before us, especially if, what if, you know, the upper two say, I like candidate X, and you are like, I don't know about that, you know, just want to give them the opportunity for some privacy and be able to communicate with the board so that there is no conflict or any perceived, you know, uncomfort, discomfort for them to share their open and honest opinion with the board members, and obviously, they can call us or.
I, I like that idea to give them another means than coming just the public comment, but I just want to caution that it's not private, because it is still subject to the public records law, it would be part of our board packets, so it would be public record, so just make sure they understand that it's not private communication.
And just through the chair, my recommendation would be, because the employees do not have John's information at Paradigm, so my recommendation would, all of that information would flow through Mr. Kazanovich to the board.
And they can obviously call us, and our numbers are on the website, so that should be made plain to them as well, so they don't have to necessarily do any of the above, they can just call us and have a conversation with any of us or all of us if they so choose.
We can certainly pass that along.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we are on 8H. I just wanted to make a clarification, during the last board of selectmen meeting, we voted that all interview questions were going to go through Caitlin. However, Caitlin currently sits in the interim town manager's office. In, in the interest of full transparency, those questions did go through Mr. Kavanovic and not through the interim town manager's office, so they are, just, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear that there is no possibility of any candidates viewing the questions before they are asked. We are now on, are there any questions or comments?
No, I, I just want to make a, I agree that we should not have necessarily done that, but keep in mind, the Marion Building is not just the manager's office, it is also the board of selectmen's office, so, and in that, we don't have staff, which is maybe something we should discuss at a future date, that we should have someone who is outside of the manager's purview, shall we say, that might be something we should discuss. That is something that I see as, as, you know, I guess, as I've been sitting here for so long. I do think the board deserves to have some independence and means of research and getting information outside of the manager, you know, and that's in no way saying that the manager or anybody is doing anything inappropriate, I just think that the board does need to start thinking about its independence and its role in oversight, which is not something that, you know, traditionally, we have taken that role as far as perhaps I would like it, but, and again, no criticism, because we, you know, there's been multiple boards and we all have our different opinions, but I do think at some point, we should be looking at creating some independence for the board to do its own research, have its own space within this building that we can go to and utilize if we need to meet people that isn't a meeting room, you know. I think it's high time that we prioritize this board's role in town government. It is a substantial role, and it's one that I personally want to be protective of, because it's very important that we are independent and that we can exercise oversight outside of the managers giving us information or department heads giving us information, we should be able to do some things on our own and on our own authority, but I'm sorry for the mona.
No, I, yeah, I just, I wanted it to be clear to the public too, that there's no advantage being held, that they will all see the questions or hear the questions for the first time during the interview process.
Oh, no, and I, and I would say that I would say on behalf of the staff, that I think they're, they would behave ethically in that situation, and that they would not share that information with someone, but I do agree that that could make an employee uncomfortable, especially where they report directly to the manager, who, you know, we have an interim manager at the moment, but, you know, I can see why that would be sensitive.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we are moving along to 9B. I will hand it over to the town manager.
Thank you. Through the chair, several, probably about four weeks ago, we had a request to look into the Department of Labor Services financial review back to 2009, and in the subsequent, subsequent weeks, the board had asked me to go through that 2009 report and determine what has been done and what has not been done. So I have attached a copy, we went through all of the recommendations, I'm happy to say the majority of these recommendations were complete. I'm not saying that I wouldn't recommend another DLS audit, this does go back to 2009, and I think there's always room for improvement, and I think times change, laws change, and some of their, some of their requests back in 2009, you know, may be different now, so I just wanted to forward that to you for your information.
Thank you. Do board members have questions?
Not, not a question so much as a, as a comment, so I was the one that had asked to hold any vote that night in terms of moving forward on a DLS audit, only because I wanted to look into it more with respect to, they offer a whole wide array of, of different things that they can do and are willing to do for the local services. And I appreciate that in 2009, I'm glad to, you know, to see what has been done and what hasn't been done, but my thinking is that, you know, that was some time ago, certainly at that time, we had a fairly new town manager, two town managers ago. Coming into 2025 and 2026, we will have a new town manager, the vast majority of the department heads have had some turnover as well. And in my mind, I think the best, not because I dealt, not because I think there's some grand conspiracy in our, in our management of our, of our town, but I think that times change, new technologies change, new fiscal policies become best practices that were not necessarily the case in 2009 or before. And I think, you know, in my mind, the best gift that we can give the incoming town manager, as well as some of the brand new department heads, such as the library director, and we're going to have a new, a new collector, is, treasurer collector, is to take advantage of the free services by DLS. And in my view, there were three audits, there were three reviews, I don't even commonly call them audits, three reviews that, 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 that I thought were appropriate. One was the fiscal management, which is similar to what they did here. One was the fiscal, the financial policies, so to look at all of the various policies and how they match up against best practices with respect to our financial management. And then another one was our financial, I think it was a financial analysis on, on the, the health of the town from a financial standpoint, and I think those three combined, if they're willing to do all three, if not, then we can certainly, you know, hopefully prioritize and, and get all three within the next certain amount of years. But if we can get those three done and then hand it over to the incoming town manager, I think that puts us in, puts them in a place where they can rely on that for changes that have to be made or should be made to move, continue Auburn sort of trajectory, in a very good trajectory that we've been operating in. There were some others like financial forecasting, I think we do that pretty well already, I don't think we need them to, it's basically they, they do your next five years of, of financial forecasts, and, and it seems like those are a lot of the smaller towns that don't have the internal personnel getting that done, so, so when we're ready for a motion, I'd, I'd like to have the select board request DLS do a, the financial management, financial policy, and financial analysis reports for the town.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yep. So as Mr. Crane said, I would be in favor of this audit, but I would just phrase it differently, not turn it over to the incoming town manager, but to assert the board's authority and provide the direction on which action steps to take in connection with the town manager. So that way, we can provide the priorities, I mean, obviously, the resources aren't, you know, ever flowing, so we should be, as a board, discussing which priorities come out of that, we should be instructing the town manager to follow up on or what information we're looking for, and I know Mr. Carpenter said independent person for the board so we can help manage that, but if we work in conjunction with the incoming town manager and help set those priorities, not just on the DSL audit, but on all things pertaining to the town, I think we need to do a better job as a board of providing that direction and working, you know, in partnership to make sure that things get done and there's follow through and we can respond to the residents' requests and, and provide answers, so.
Sure. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have one more audit to, to offer, and I, and I really think that we should have them look at the IT system for us. I think that is such an important part of what we do and how residents interact with us. I think that would also be helpful as we're looking to prioritize, we're doing capital planning, we're doing all these things that we have, we're moving in a direction that's going to, and we can support it with good information so that the residents understand that these are necessary things that we need to do. We have a lot of information that we would not want someone else to have access to. So I would agree with Mr. Crane's three, and I would ask if we could do, request an IT systems audit, or if you're a IT function, I'll, I'll say it that way.
All right, Madam Chair, I make a motion that the town request from the Department of Revenue Division, Local Services, four reviews or audits, one on fiscal management, one financial policies, one financial analysis, and the last, the IT audit, the review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
And just before we leave this topic, I just wondered for, sort of a future note for us to keep in mind, they had recently done a pretty good report on the benefits or non-deficits, depending on what they find on a regional 911 communication system for several towns. So I know as we sort of explore that further, that might be a good opportunity to get a sort of an independent eye on that type of, type of change as well.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I, I note for the viewers that these audits are all free.
Thank you.
Before we leave this, can I make a motion that we prepare a letter for your signature to express our appreciation from Mr. Richards for bringing this to the board's attention?
Sure.
Give me Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Eric Richards.
Always, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the meteorologist, forgive me. I don't know that many Eric's.
I, I, yeah, I, I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well, thank you for that. We are on number 10, we have no table items, there are no member items at this meeting. Is there, there are no public comment for the second public comment period? We do have meeting minutes in our package from February 10th and from February 24th. Are there any corrections to the meeting minutes? Can I accept them as read? Thank you, so we would just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The chair is a yes as well. We are adjourned.